The Committee of the Whole. I'd like to thank everyone for attending this afternoon. We do have three items on our agenda. And first, we'll start with approval of the minutes. Councilors, have you had an opportunity to read the minutes from the May 18 meeting? If so, I would like to entertain a motion and a second to approve those minutes.
I move for approval.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Thank you, councilor.
One abstention.
Abstention, one abstention. So those minutes from May 18 are approved. Councilors, for our first agenda item, we have an update on our recycling program that is being brought to us by Director Josh Yates of our Public Works Department. And company, I see we have.
Chief of Staff.
Chief of Staff and the operating chief. Director Yates, we'll let you introduce your other team there with you.
So I said earlier, this was Chief of Staff and Chief of Operations.
All right.
Tell them your name and your age.
Mason and I'm seven.
All right.
Hello, and I'm four.
Oh, well, we welcome you all. You have an outstanding staff there. That's right. Now, we have to be kind to him. He's got his chief from Chief of Operations here. Go ahead, Director Yates, thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam President, pro temp, council members, committee members. Thank you.
I'm gonna say, doesn't sound like your own, your own. Wait a minute, Cody, it's wrong.
Hey, can you hear enough?
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to get started just saying, this is a program that I'm very excited about. Can you still hear me?
Okay.
Okay, just make sure. This is something that I got involved in and started back in 2022, or 2020, I'm sorry. We're in 2022 now. And I wanted to bring to you today an item that we talked about with the City Hall program. It started out as a pilot, but we wanted to bring to you everything involving waste management. So if we can go to the next slide. When we brought this to you, City Hall encompasses everything surrounding waste management, involving recycling, route optimization. We have a lot of other features such as equipment upgrades, personnel changes, litter, you know, better quality of life for citizens, bulk pickup, illegal dumping, landfills, education, revenue potentials, and sustainability. All of these elements touch how we operate. And I know we're here today to talk about recycling, but it's hard to do one without the other. They go hand in hand. So today, I'm bringing for you both elements that will talk about recycling and route optimization. Reason being is that when we recycle, we're helping protect the environment, and it makes us feel good. Everybody likes to recycle. Or we do have a lot of folks that do want to recycle. We want to help folks recycle. When we talk about route optimization, we also, that's better, less pollution, less trucks on the road, less fuel utilized, less greenhouse gas emissions, saves resources, it's green, and it provides accountability for all and less waste. And really, this recycle program is the same elements. It protects the environment, saves resources, prevents pollution, supports public health, it's green, overall, less waste, accountable and examples for others, and less greenhouse gas emissions. So the items I'm going to be talking to you about today are really twofold. One is, this program has the ability to do what's called an opt-in, opt-out program. And it is essentially a program that allows us to figure out where our recycling is, you know, who actually is wanting to recycle, that allows them to opt into the program to recycle. And it gives us an idea where we can build a basis of routes around where people want to recycle. Currently, we're trying to run the entire city in one day. And it's not effective. It leads to a lot of misses and a lot of calls to y'all, to our office, to 3-1-1. And this would give us an opportunity to put a route together for the areas that are the highest recyclers, the areas that recycle the most, and we would be able to service those citizens better. The map you see in front of you on the screen is an example of, those dots represents households. This is kind of what software, some of the software looks like. And if you go into our GIS system, it's very similar with where you can pinpoint certain addresses, locations, and the different colors indicate different routes, different trucks on those routes. This company that we're presenting today, this idea that we're bringing will help to optimize those routes, to put them together, bring technology into the trucks. And it's an item that we'll be able to integrate with C Click Fix. We'll be able to provide more public awareness and education, and also efficiently determine our best routes. When I started in the public works sector, the routes were not mapped. It was, it's the mall route, it's Joe's route. And they know them by heart, the guys know them by heart. But that puts us in such a bind, in such a bad situation when those drivers are out, or we get hit with COVID, and several drivers are out, and no one knows the routes. So this software allows us to actually implement routes that we can push out to our team members. When we have a truck go down, we can take the remainder of that route and push it to other team members and trucks, and they know exactly what to service. It's very accountable, there's a lot of good pieces to this, but I want to reiterate that this is for, you know, all phases of our waste operation. It benefits recycle, but you can't do one really without the other. Our waste trucks are our recycle trucks. So what we want to do here today, if you can go to the next slide, the company that we're looking at and what we're trying to do is what's called RouteWare. RouteWare is integrated technology. Basically, you take into account all of the things that we have in the city, all of our routes, all of the services we provide to the city. And what it does, it helps balance out the workload. If you talk to our staff, I can tell you right now, east is the biggest district we have as far as garbage pickup, south is a close second, and then north and west, or north and endsly are both areas that are a lot more, that are smaller routes. But this right here would help us balance that workload, so we can have the same number of drivers at each district, so that we can balance it more equally, where I'm not having to take two or three drivers and send them to a certain district just to help out because their workload is higher. So there's a lot of benefits to this. I would like to point out that the company we met with, they've got several rave reviews from other municipalities, I believe it's Memphis and some of the other municipalities. Atlanta uses the Recollect, which is a company that RouteWare just purchased, and they do a lot of their education and their outreach and their public awareness, that's a part of it. But they talk about return on investment. Sending a truck back out to pick up a miss, or what was labeled as a miss, is extremely expensive, extremely expensive. And so where we're going with our carts, where we're going with, you know, the new equipment we have coming in, this is going to be just an added feature that will allow us to be a lot more accountable to the citizens and to every one of us. I mean, we'll be able to see everything that we're doing. These are, this technology includes cameras, includes cell service, includes a lot of items on these trucks, where we'll be able to go through the neighborhood and you can see exactly what was there when that truck came by. There'll be no more guessing of, did it come out after they passed, or was there a truck blocking it, or was that the picker machine and not the limb loader, so they were only looking for heavy piles, or going to list the piles? So there's a lot of items that our citizens see, and they don't really understand everything about how we operate. And this will give us more accountability on our side to make sure we pick up what we need to pick up, but also be more accountable for illegal dump piles, or the things that we see out there and reasons why we do not get certain things, if it's on private property or whatever that may be. So of these items, there's a lot of positives. I won't read them all, but essentially, a lot of companies that have invested in this said that they've been able to pay for the system in just six months, 80% fewer customer service escalations, took 8% of our trucks off the roads. Those are the feedback that we're getting from other municipalities that incorporated this software into their system. Again, this is accountability for both us as the city and then as citizens as well, to make sure we're doing what needs to be done. If we can go to the next slide? So we touched on a couple of these things, but one of the big things about this is you basically drive fewer miles. You have to spend less resources, less gas, less mileage on the trucks that we do have if we can optimize what we have currently out there today. And this will work on our older equipment, it'll work on our new equipment we have coming in, and we'll be able to be integrated into all of that equipment and set up for all of us to see. If you go to the next slide too, I want to make sure we get to this. This is an example of routes in a city. And you can see the black routes, the red routes, green routes, purple, blue. You can kind of see how cities structure their routes, try and incorporate them together. But you can see a lot of them are co-mingled, and that's similar to what our routes look like right now. You may hit one area right here and then on the far left on the black on the screen, and skip everything in red and go to the next area over there in the black. Well, that's driving a lot of excess miles we don't have to drive. I don't know if y'all heard about not long ago UPS and some of the other bigger carriers not making left-hand turns. They were all making right-hand turns to avoid the weight at the lights, to not burn so much fuel. There's certain things you can integrate into this and this efficiency with these routes will go a long way in helping our bottom dollar, which is our fuel cost, our equipment cost, our personnel cost, overtime, things of that nature. So if we can go to the next slide? This device right here is similar to what would be in the trucks, in every one of the trucks. And as you go by, it has a button. And remember, we're moving to carts, we're moving to automation. As you go by, it's a green button for I got it, there's a red button for miss, and it takes a picture and tells you why, you know, it sends it. And so if we have the resident call from that location, we have photo evidence of what's going on there. So the goals of this really is to incorporate an opt-in, opt-out program on recycling. We all want better recycling, and we all want more infrastructure in our recycling. This is basically the highways that we're putting in. If you look at a road network, some of the major infrastructure and technology, the backbone of the system. Right now, we don't have this in place, and what we rely upon is supervisors following trucks to see if they picked up the routes. That's just not, that's not the way we need to operate. We're moving to a more, a better operating system, a more safer operating system with automated trucks, where we can reduce injury and death among people that work back there. That is the most dangerous job, one of the most dangerous jobs in the United States. And this will help with the accountability of that and not having an additional person or supervisor having to follow the routes and ensure that the routes are up. This will be able to be seen on GPS, it'll be able to seen through the cameras. You can tell exactly what addresses were hit, and if they were missed, why they were missed. So it's a lot of accountability that's brought into this system. So again, the goal of this is to create an opt-in, opt-out program for recycling, establish best routes for recycling. And then another aspect of the recycling program is that there's these drop-off trailers that are a potential for areas that we don't have recycling participation. So if we're not having good recycle participation in an area, it doesn't make sense to drive every street in the neighborhood to pick up five households. If we have a drop-off trailer for recycling, we can still provide that as an opportunity for residents to drop off the recycle for those that really want to do that, but not have to drive every street in the city. So those are an option as well, and part of some of the costs that we added into these figures. Based on the numbers of those interested in recycling, we can establish better timeframes, frequency, and ensure we collect what's out. I'm sure all of you have heard, the biggest complaint that we receive is, we don't know when you're coming by. And we want to be able to say, we're going to be by at this time, at this location, this is when we'll be here. And, you know, we're doing it twice, we brought it back to once a month for recycling, now we're at twice a month for recycling. Based on what we receive on the numbers and the people that want to opt into recycling program, we could be able to increase that again if we're not having to run the entire city in a day. So there's a lot of positives that can come out of this. The program is driven on true recycling participation, real numbers and real data. The cans and carts that we have coming, when we go by there and pick it up with automated side loaders, it'll tell you how much, what the weight is per household. It's very sophisticated. So you can see, okay, well, this person is, we're averaging 45 pounds, you know, per household. It's very good data that will lead to be able to see, are we making a difference in our waste versus our recycle? Our households that recycle actually having less waste go out. You'd be able to really look at the data, and I'm a numbers person, I like to see that. And finally, it'll provide us an ability to provide much-needed education, real-time notices and information to residents. This is, like I said, integrates with our C Click Fix program, but also is a mechanism, basically creates an app and other venues where you can go to that can give you updates on your recycling, your bulk, your waste, everything of that nature as well. So the final slide talks a little bit about cost. So initially, we had $600,000, I believe this council set aside $600,000 for recycling efforts. The cost for year one is $595,000. Reoccurring cost is around $240,000 as well. The cost are $250,000 for an upfront cost for the hardware, installation, training, and the recollect. All of those systems combined are around $250,000 initially. This includes four cameras per truck, computer, tablet, GPS, et cetera. We also have cell network, real-time location, video, it's the whole works. Monthly costs are roughly around $20,000 billed quarterly, so annually, that would be around $240,000 a year. And the recycle drop-off trailers are roughly $35,000, which we're looking at potentially three right now, estimating three right now. But once this program gets going, you'll be able to see really how many you need and where you can put them at. And so with that, I wanted to kind of turn it over if there's any questions or concerns or comments in regard to these items we presented here today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yates, for this presentation. It's one that I know is a topic that is very important to the majority of the councilors. So councilors, I'll open it up this time for questions for Mr. Yates. And we'll start down here with you, Councilman Moore.
Hey, Mr. Yates, first of all, or Director Yates, first of all, I want to say that, you know, I appreciate this information. I know that it's something that, you know, all of our residents will definitely appreciate. One of the questions that I had though is, I know you talked about the feature where it would allow the truck driver to take pictures of trash that was possibly missed and why it was missed. Does that go straight to the resident? Or does it have the option of going to the council members as well, so that we'll be aware of what is missed also?
So the notices would be tremendous.
Okay.
You know, we, there's a lot of misses and reasons why we miss a lot. So it's going to be a software system, we don't, we can tweak it how we want to tweak it, once the system gets in. Right now, it would be coming to us as to why we're missing or why we're not picking up, it would come to us. And then it would be, really how it's set up is to be associated with our 3-1-1 network as well, be able to have a system where they could log in and see, okay, well, this address that pulls up, this is the reason why it was missed today. That's really where we're supposed to be going to. As far as email notification or something like that, that would just be tremendous. But because the numbers are very, very high, trying to service so many citizens in a day. But the goal of it is to have it on record, even if it's, you know, there's a lot of different options. We can go to just the push notifications for when we miss it and we push miss, or it can be run real-time all the time, camera's always running. So you can go back and see what happened if you got a specific address and say they're calling saying, it was there, driver's saying, no, it wasn't, you can go back and look and see. It's a system where it's very accountable, it does put it in the hands of the driver where they can specifically say why they missed, which is what we want to get to, what the training is for, part of the system. But it will allow us to be able to see why it was not missed, even if it's not push-miss, or we can go back and review that exact location.
Madam President?
Yes.
To the councilor's question, I think at some point, kind of how we do current things now, information is routed up to us, and we in return share out with neighborhood officers and councilors. We believe we can arrange something, we just don't know how that would look yet, but I'm confident we can get something to you, sir.
Okay, and I only ask that question because I know, you know, we'll start hearing from residents about, hey, our trash wasn't picked up, and I don't know why, and just trying to make sure that we're in the know as to how to direct residents to 3-1-1 to check into the reasons behind that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Abbott. Yep.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam President. Thank you very much for this presentation. I am an avid recycler, composter. I take garbage out once every three or four weeks because I have very little after I recycle and compost, and I wish everyone would do that. But they don't. So the question is communication. I am a great believer in letters, door hangers, stickers, and any other way you can communicate with people, because the residents often completely misunderstand how recycling works, what can be recycled, the fact that you don't leave the food in the jar when you throw it in the recycle bin. I mean, we have a lot of education problems. Councilor Quinn and I had a tour of our recycling contractor, and that was where I learned that if your recycling is wet, they take it to the dump. How many people knew? I mean, we have open bins for recycling, what were, you know, like what were we expecting? So we send our guys out there to collect all this stuff, and if it rained, it all goes to the dump. And we pay more for the stuff that goes to the dump than we do for the good stuff. So to me, communication is 100%, 120% of what we need to do. And to my knowledge, we have no communication. We just don't do it unless we do it via technology, and many of our residents don't have technology. So I've been on the council a little over 20 years, and I have asked for all 20 of those years to see the communications that are sent out by Public Works. And do you know what I've gotten? Goose egg. Because they don't send anything out, or I guess, I guess not, it's either that or I was just asking, you know, the wrong person. So to me, it's so important to communicate with people the way they communicate. It's great if everybody has an iPhone and they check our website. But there are a heck of a lot of residents who don't check our website, they don't even know we have one, and they don't have technology. That being said, you seem like a really great guy, and I just feel like we're going to have some communication.
Madam President?
I'm Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. As we shared with the council last Tuesday in our robust meeting, this is a systems, new technology way to address this issue, but it's also wrapped in layers with enforcement, which also includes the third piece of the slash education communication. And when all of that's tied together, we will communicate this to the council, how we plan to continue to engage the public on educating them and communicating with them, I guess, in all areas dealing with public works, and what's our role and what's their role in partnership to deliver the service that they expect.
Thank you.
And Mr. President, just one more thing. If we could clearly communicate what we don't pick up, because in my neighborhood, and I don't think my neighborhood's any stranger than any of yours, people throw out everything. I mean, if they don't want it, they chunk it out there for the city to pick up, and supposedly, we don't pick up mattresses, we don't pick up construction materials, we don't pick up dead bodies of animals and things unless they're in the road, we don't pick up tires, but we do. And so it just strikes me that we need to tell people what we're not going to pick up anymore, and then we should cite them if they continue to throw that stuff out, like mattresses. My favorite.
And I will say that with our pilot program that we rolled out initially, there was communication on all recyclables that went out in the pilot program. And we just had a communication with our vendor on the first series of carts that are coming in, that'll be communication on how to use a cart, what we, you know, and information can be put in there about recycling as well. So that is something we're looking at in this software company, RouteWare and Recollect, they actually do a phenomenal job. You can go on there and type your material in and determine whether there's a recyclable vendor in your area for certain products, or what is recyclable, what is not. There's a lot of information that can come out on that as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yates, we appreciate that. Any other councilors? I'm Dr. Quinn.
Well, this is really cool. Thank you, Mayor Woodfin, for continuing to propel the city of Birmingham's operations into the 21st century and bringing us closer to a data-driven city. Really, you know, I think this is, we've shared, we had a shared interest in getting us there, and it's a continuous journey. My question is really about sort of the bigger system, like the recyclable commodities market. So when we came into office in 2017, you know, we didn't even have an agreement with Birmingham Recycling and Recovery. They were happy to take our curbside recyclables because they were turning around and making money off of that. However, you know, we saw a dramatic shift in the market, I think it was, you know, around 2019, where basically the bottom fell out and BRR, you know, had to start covering the cost of their operations by charging municipalities tonnage. And it's a two-tiered system, like Councilor Abbott indicated, you know, there's a one fee for materials that are, can be processed, and there's a higher fee for contaminated recyclables. But my point is, is that, you know, as far as I know, the city is still being invoiced by BRR for our tipping at their facility. You know, and I think that's somewhere in, I think historically, it's been somewhere in the range of about, you know, $7,000 to $10,000 per month. And I'm thinking about, okay, if we start doing this better and more people opt in and, you know, certainly want curbside recycling, and, you know, I think it's the right thing for us to do. But thinking about if we start, you know, if we're doing this better, we also have to think about the monetary cost that accompany that. So it's not really a question to you, I'm just kind of making that point, that we've got to think, you know, beyond this system and be prepared to, you know, pay those costs that come with doing things better.
Thank you, Councilor Quinn. Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Director Yates. I am really impressed about the prospect of this. I don't know, is, for, just to clarify, is there the ask for us to vote on this, or is this just information?
It's information only, and, I mean, once we get with Dr. Yates, you're Dr. Yates. We'll bring a proposal back for this software to be implemented that will require council's approval.
Okay, so like from a monetary standpoint?
It's already budgeted.
Okay, that's what I was, yeah, one question was. I was a little disturbed by the comment that if the recycling's wet, they don't accept it and they ship it off? So is that, that's accurate?
Yes, sir.
So what? So, what, so, are we picking up recycling on days that it's raining?
A lot of our recyclers just put it in plastic bags.
Okay.
They don't, you know, a lot of them do use the bins. We do have the new carts that are out that have tops.
And that's just on the pilot program, right?
It was just in the pilot program, but a lot of people just put it in plastic bags, and we grab the plastic bags, it doesn't contaminate what's inside it.
Gotcha. When we have this new, as we roll out the new bins, does that include recycling bins?
Right now, it's just waste carts are what's coming. The pilot program had both a combination of waste and recycling. Right now, it's waste only, and I think we really need to get further into that, make sure we have our waste taken care of before we really roll into recycle, additional recycle carts, in my opinion. The infrastructure, this is the kind of the backbone leading us into that program, identify where the recyclers are, and then provide new and better infrastructure in order to recycle better.
Yes. So, we're, I apologize.
That's okay.
So, we're working, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to answer your question.
I wasn't used to being interrupted, what'd you say?
So, we're trying to, we're working with the same vendor that provides us the waste containers and the recycling containers, so that's a more of a long-range plan that we're trying to find a solution to within the same allotment of money that was already approved by the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, so, I was distracted because of my interruption.
I'm sorry.
But, but, no, is this software specific to recycling, then? I guess my question is, can we use it for bulk trash, and can we use it for household waste?
Yes, this software is going to enhance our waste system completely, overall. But, the reason it's for you today is because you can't do one without the other. I can't just do recycling, and this is what's needed for recycling.
Okay.
We need to be able to optimize routes for recycling routes. We could get to it more often if we knew where recyclers were. Right now, we're just trying to run every street in the city, and it's not efficient.
But after this is implemented, it will be used for regular trash as well?
Yes.
Like the camera aspect?
When they implement it, it's going to be for all of it.
Okay, great, awesome, thank you.
Perfect.
A quick follow-up. So, I mean, there's no reason why we couldn't use the same type of approach for our bulk recycle, for bulk waste, right? Because, I mean, on a typical block, you may have only a couple of households that have a pile that needs to be picked up, so...
So, this quote that we had on this presentation was for 70 trucks, and that's for all of our waste trucks, and hopefully most all of our bulk trucks. Hopefully, that includes everything we have and does the entire system. And as we add these routes, as they're optimized, they're supposed to really be helping us to minimize the amount of trucks we have. That's why we went with the number of 70.
Council Clark?
Thank you, let's see, oh, my mic works, yay. So, I was just wondering, this seems like, this seems awesome, so I'm really excited, and I'm glad you're going to be more efficient and able to deploy all your resources more efficiently if we get this done. Was there more than one software solution that was evaluated, or is this kind of a unique solution that works well with our existing platform?
So, I have looked at several systems. I've been to several waste exposi, I guess, waste conferences and really tried to dive into what we need here in Birmingham, and hands down, this was the best system that's come back from recommendations from other cities, I mean, that's policies around the US.
So, will the application development be simple because it integrates well with C-click Fix? Is it kind of just, or is it going to be a long time with IMS to get it up and going?
So, it can, almost any technology can probably integrate with C-click Fix, and anybody, what I meant by that is that when I say integrates with it, we'll be able to identify the C-click Fixes that are coming in, and we'll be able to have identification on our routes and the misses that we're identifying in the field.
Okay.
So, as those come in, and as we, you know, the 80% reduction that they speak of in customer complaints is due to the fact that when we get a complaint that we missed something, a lot of times if it's one house on a street, we likely didn't miss it, it was put out after they went by. If it's a whole block, we probably missed the block. But, a lot of times when that occurs, we don't have any evidence that we did miss it or didn't. This will give us evidence, and the complaints will go way down. A lot of people call in, and they'll even, sometimes they'll say, y'all came through here before I could get it out. I mean, they'll be honest with us, but, you know, this will hold everybody accountable, and you'll see a lot of the complaints go down.
So, this is a separate system, but, so, how long will it take to do the application development for you to be up and running with it?
I would say that this system, from what, from the conversations I've had, once, once everything's established, contract secured, everything of that nature, looking 90 to 120 days.
Okay.
Training for implementation, for getting the tech hardware and software up and going, 90 to 120 days.
Okay. And then, will, so, will residents have to be tech-enabled, or that part will still interface? They'll communicate through 311 if they don't have the, an app on their phone or something? Or, how do you see that working for people who aren't tech-enabled? And then, the other question I have is, how soon before the recycle collection day do you opt in? Because I would imagine you would opt in each, each month or each cycle, because I recycle, but sometimes I don't have recycle, when is the recycle day? Or...
The goal is to get, you know, recyclers every time. Like, we want people to opt in once and be, this household recycles. We want to make sure we go by this household.
Okay, because they...
That's the goal in that program, because obviously, things happen, you're out of town or whatever it may be, and you may not recycle, but we want to identify those that do want to recycle. We've got a lot of folks that do not care to recycle, won't put anything out there on recycle day.
Okay.
Or, so...
I got you, so you opt in once, you either, you're a recycler or you're not. But now, if we did it for the bulk trash, that's a little more incidental, you know, than...
That program, the opt-in, opt-out, is specifically for recycle.
Okay.
That's not for any others, any other service that we're providing.
Okay. And the tech, so, how, okay, to get updates, then? Will people have to be tech-enabled to get updates?
So, the communication plan the mayor spoke of earlier, we're trying to do as much as we can on notice through email, through tech that you speak of. This does have tech-enabled in it, I mean, this, a lot of the way that we're moving is more tech-driven apps and things of that nature. This will give you notifications through that app, because if you want to right now, you go to the website, or you go on your C-click Fix or 311, and that's where you get your information. This will be an opportunity to be able to see it on an app as well, in more real time. Now, if they're not tech-enabled, we'll still be doing our same communications through neighborhood leaders and 311, and that we're doing right now.
Okay. So, we'll continue to have the call center, we're not moving away from that, ever, I don't think.
No, not to my knowledge.
All right, thank you, Madam Proten.
Council Woods can go, I'll just go second.
Okay, Council Woods.
Thank you. Real quick, if you could talk about some of the, I guess, the support services associated with the ongoing cost? I think it was like 240 or so a year going forward, like, what, what type of support does the vendor, I guess, what are you, what are you getting for that going forward?
So, the biggest startup is the optimization of the routes, identifying where we can optimize our routes. And then, there'll be tweaks to the system because our driver's going to say, well, I can't service them here, I need to service them there, and we're going to be able to tweak those routes to make them as optimal as possible. So, the company's going to continue to work with us as we find changes and imperfections in the field. The second thing is cell service and being able to provide data and storage in the cloud for videos, photos, things that are coming through. I think that was one of our biggest hurdles with the illegal dumping cameras, is the cost associated with storing it in the cloud, or getting the data back, or transferring it. So, it does that, they handle all, I talked to Director McLennan, and I was trying my best to say, we want it to be where y'all don't have to do anything more than what you have now, just like we are, you know, tapped on resources, we don't want to tap in or put more pressure on our IMS department either. So, it's to handle all the maintenance, repair, upgrades. So, once they install that, that software and the hardware, as it updates, as the hardware updates, they're replacing it in their vehicles, it's to cover all of that.
Cool, cool. You're a big fan of the efficiency, and I do, this may be a bigger, much bigger thing, but just something to talk about would be more of an opt-in. Like I say, you call 311 if you have bulk trash, you know, this week, and they tell you what day, and puts you on the tech, but that could be another step on that, but yeah, I like it.
Thank you, Council Woods, and Council Tate did have one, if you're okay.
Director Yates, just a quick question. When this program is up and running, I'm just saying like your larger areas, and you were talking about the one-arm truck, how many trucks would be just, I'm just going to give you, I live in North Birmingham, so around me, you know, Birmingham, you have Pacifico, Finley, Hooper City, Fountain Hydrate Hill, those communities that are locked in that, that north quadrant, how many trucks will run in those areas? Like, multiple trucks?
You talking about recycling, or are you talking...
No, I'm talking about the trash we could...
The bulk trash?
Mm-hmm.
So, if you're in the northern area being serviced, they have anywhere up to six or eight routes that could be run in that area if we put enough trucks in that area. It depends on personnel as well. A lot of times what we struggle with and been real open about is recruiting drivers. So, when we have a shortage in truck drivers, refuse truck drivers, that's our first priority, so we pull our operators from bulk. So, that's, that's where we get, you know, an operator or two every now and then to make sure we get our waste off the ground every single day. So, the number of trucks running in that area ranges daily, depending on, we don't just have extra operators out there. So, it does range, it can be anywhere from two trucks, three trucks, to six or seven trucks, depending on how many drivers we have available that day.
Thank you. Council Proten.
All right, I just got a, just a more general question. So, I don't know if everybody heard you correctly, but you said there are 70 trucks that are perform these operations?
We have a large number of trucks because a lot of our fleet has aged, and so, the new equipment that we've purchased is on the way. It's not here, a lot of it is not here yet. That's last year's money and the new allocation that I just made. Those trucks, through Director Roberts, have been ordered, but they take a while to get here and get on the ground. Because of that, we are running several older model trucks, and we have a very large fleet of older model trucks, because as they break down, we got to put another one out on the road. So, there are a lot of trucks that we're running. I don't, don't quote me as that's the exact number of trucks we have, that's what we started with, what we felt we needed for our operations.
So, are we turning over that entire fleet, or all of the existing vehicles have to be updated with the cameras and things and of that nature? And by the way, would this also integrate our street sweepers as well?
I do not currently have it on our street sweeper program, but the cameras and the software and hardware that are installed in the truck can be taken out of that truck and put in a different truck. It integrates well and better with the new automated side loaders, I mean, those, they obviously have more data on our new trucks and more ways, things that we can recognize. But, the older trucks, they'll be, that are going on, we'll be able to still be accountable with them, we just have to, you know, pull that material off, they're not going to, you know, that's not a separate fee, that's part of that $20,000 monthly fee to make sure that our equipment's running and up to date in our trucks. And if it's got to come out of one, we put another one, that's what it'll take, that's what that fee's for.
Thank you. Do you have one question?
Yeah, it's about trucks.
Okay.
So, I'm just curious about the trucks, and is there a different truck that picks up recycling? Because, like today, the truck looked like the regular truck, and I hear people sometimes say they didn't pick up the recycling, and when they called back, it was just a regular refuse truck that picked it up, and so they don't believe that it was being actually handled as recycling, but that it was going into landfill. So, can you just talk a little bit about the difference in the collection method and where, you know?
So, that's a great question. The trucks that pick up garbage do pick up recycle, they're cleaned out every night, our trucks are, and they're especially cleaned out before, really well cleaned out before we pick up recycle. And also, we do get that complaint when we have missed recycling. We've started sending a supervisor out there in a pickup truck to pick it up, so people don't think we're throwing it away with the garbage, because that's gotten to be a big issue. People do think that we're throwing it with the garbage, and I can't say that that has never happened. I'm sure that sometimes when you've got two or three bags out there, they might grab it thinking it was garbage as well. But, we've started sending, when we get the requests in through 311, we started sending those requests to a supervisor to make sure the supervisor takes a pickup truck out there so the residents won't think that we're throwing that away with the household garbage.
Okay, just one more quick.
Okay.
I'll be quick. See, I don't get to come to this meeting much, so I got to make it count. So, you talked about some of the benefits of recycling, you know, in real kind of environmental terms, but, and then optimizing the route has some gas cost savings, and just less wear and tear on the equipment because you're not, you know, you're able to optimize. Is there a cost to the landfill, I mean, is there a savings to the landfill operation if we can divert a lot of, because I know that it's expensive to open enclosed cells, and much of that material doesn't break down. Is that quantifiable, or it's just something you could just intuit is going to save us?
So, I would say that yes, recycling diversion from the landfill is a money saver on the landfill side. I will say that there's additional cost to recycling. We spend cost one way or the other. We really want to get finer details on our data. What we've started doing is weighing the trucks from the neighborhoods, so we can kind of see what's coming from the neighborhoods and what the districts are picking up each day. It kind of, it helps us, give us an idea, and we also, we separate, a lot of times, we separate vegetative bulk from trash bulk, and that way, we can divert that from our landfill as well. So, there's a lot of methods we're trying to do to divert waste from the landfill. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Council Proten.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to go along with Council Williams. We kind of need a short-term plan for recycling bins, and I can't read his mind, but I know he's asking, because we have a lot of residents that do ask for recycling bins, and we don't have an answer for them. Is that something, Mr. Mayor, that you're saying the council may have to absorb the costs? Like, what do we tell the residents if they ask for recycling bins? Because we, because we told the public that they were, that we were getting recycling bins and trash bins?
No, we originally told that we were starting the trash collection, garbage collection trucks first before we rolled out this recycling plan. Once we get this plan up and rolling, then we'll find some type of mechanism to find more recycling bins.
Okay.
This is not together.
Well, I guess we can talk about this later, because we have to tell them something, like, is it more of like, they need to buy their own bins, or...
Well, I think the priority at this point is to make sure that trash collection is paramount, because that's the one that's costing the city the most money.
Okay. I was just thinking about if we're going to ask people to opt in, what are we going to tell them?
Yeah, I mean, I think Mr. Yates pretty much outlined that whole plan, so once we get the opt-in, opt-out program, we'll make sure that we rectify by purchasing recycling bins. Now, if someone loses one or damages one, they will be, they will be more having to pay for their own recycling bin.
Yeah, I just asked, because like, I wouldn't mind paying for them, but, you know, I have like, South Tillsville has asked multiple times, like, we've asked for recycling bins, and 311 can they give us an answer? So, I just asked that. I think the biggest thing is the cleanliness campaign, and I know we have the World Games coming up, but there is life after the World Games. I think these new trash bins are coming out literally like right after the World Games. And I guess, is there anything we can do to help out with the education piece? Also, have we ever thought about surveying different neighborhoods to see whether they would have paper, or are they okay with digital, and if they will absorb the cost of having a printed copy? And I asked this because I had a neighborhood last night asking for printed copies of the bulk trash, but we don't do that anymore because it costs a lot of money.
You see the hesitation and pause, because I'm trying to think of how to respond to you, Madam Proten. The answer to the question, and I'm not sure if that's been explored, it's doubtful. But I think we, as in the council and the mayor's office, are gonna have some more conversation about different forms of communication-
Yeah.
-versus what, how, versus what the majority of citizens and the channels they communicate in, or, and/or how should we communicate with them based on services or dates for services, et cetera?
Okay. We can just talk about another time the cleanliness campaign, because I think the council, like I've said before, Be Liter Free is a good campaign. That's something we can do, or Talk of Trash, whatever. But we kinda need to come to consensus, because I think it will fall on us individually to talk to our neighborhoods and residents about this.
I think that's worth developing and also talking about more. And so, that's something that we could make as a goal after World Games, to have some dialogue and communication along that lines. Because what I'm hearing, we've got a couple of things, availability, how to roll out the opt-in, the cost of those containers, and the education piece. And so, those could take some more conversation. I wanna thank you, Mr. Yates. As you can see, this is a very, very important topic to all of us. I think we're all excited to see this program roll out, and we can see what it can do. I'm more excited. I know recycling is very important. I wanna see that second generation of when we go into the bulk trash. I think that's something, I'd love to see some progress with that and how we pick that up. Because it rolls, it seems to work the same way that recycling, you know, that truck just passes by looking for that bulk trash. So, I'd love to see that go into the second generation. So, thank you all. Are there any final, thank you, Mr. Yates. All right. Thank you. We, we love your team. Bring them back next time. Thank you. All right, at this time, councilors, we are going to go into our second item. And this is a information and introduction about the iLegislate features that are part of Granicus. And this will be presented to us by our city clerk, Mr. Lee Frazier.
Can I borrow Mr. Yates' key?
I know. You may need them.
Good evening, councilors. How are y'all doing?
Hello.
Before I jump into the little app feature on iLegislate, I just wanted to package on Fridays. What you gotta understand is, the main issue we're kinda having is, we have the transparency forms, and you're going back years for contracts for a particular vendor. And that creates your package and makes it hard. So, if we could get some help from council, I guess, to kinda make that legislation, you know, with just the fiscal year we're dealing with. And then maybe find a virtual component to house the transparency information for the different vendors. And that would cut down on your package. Because, I mean, for instance, on Fridays sometimes, and I'm joking, I'm making this up, it might take four hours to make copies. Just the package itself, four hours total, just for paper copies. And so, in trying to alleviate that, that's why I kinda wanted to go ahead and try to push out the iLegislate component of Granicus. But at the same time, I'm just being honest, I don't know if we're gonna just stay with Granicus, because we've been with Granicus for years. And Ms. Abbott, I think you've been the longest council here. You know that we've had issues. Everybody knows we've had issues. So, I don't know, and we'll deal with that. We'll talk with the administration. How we move on that as far as the thought was concerned. We've had some technical problems and some stuff in the past. And I'm just, I'm not totally happy. But again, that's a whole nother ballgame. But we do have a whole year to deal with, so we'll deal with the iLegislate component. And basically, what this is, is an app. And so, if you're using the app, of course, if you have an iPad at home, you can give me your pass, we'll set up a password for you. I'll do it in the office or whatever. But the thing of it is, every three months, the password has to change. That's the issue that I'm having that will cause a problem or conflict. If you lose your password, I don't know what it is, and all this kinda stuff. We'll work that out. But the issue is, if you have the app, and you're at home, and you're able to use the iLegislate app, which will use through Apple Store, so you're gonna have to have an iPad. You're not gonna be able to use a Google product or anything. You can use the app to bring in your agenda. The agenda will be loaded with the attachments. And if you've noticed on Tuesday, some of your little gym clips have been beside some of the items in the last couple of weeks, if you haven't paid attention to it. So, basically, if you click on those attachments, you can open it up, and then the virtual component of the software on the app will allow you to mark up the items, make notes, et cetera, and keep that information, whether you're in council chambers or not. It's because it's through the app. So, if you're at home, and you leave your iPad at home, you come back to the council chambers for a council meeting, of course, that information will still be on the app, because that's how you sign in, is yourself, and that information will still be there. And that's the only way I'm thinking of trying to break that information up. Because if I'm getting it all in one packet, of course, you know, you've seen the component is for trying to load that stuff up. It takes forever sometimes, unless you're just gonna try to load the agenda by yourself, and that's easy. It comes right up. But if you're trying to load the whole packet up, it gets cumbersome. And then, of course, if you've got other items on your computer, as far as PDFs, and if you're not cleaning that out, then you're not gonna be able to open it up at all, to be honest with you. So, that's the way of trying to break it up. And I just gave you some little guide, breaking it down, how to use it. It's simple. It's not complicated. It kinda goes through, you can go through, look at the past videos as well. You can also mark up and open the attachments, and you can just go through it. I didn't wanna spend a whole lot of time doing the presentation on it, because it's not that complicated. And I know you guys could work through it. But again, we'd have to establish, if you wanna use your own password or make one up for you, we'd have to go through all that out with this kid on that. And if you've got your own iPad at home, that you can, and come in here, or without trying to keep up with that, and just use the iPads that we provide for you. But your information will already still be there. So, that's, that's the great thing about it. You don't have to worry about carrying two items around. So, basically, that's it. I don't have a whole lot, the system is simple. It's not complicated. It's just the point of, it's just another extra step for us in the office on Fridays. But we'll end up getting used to it, getting staff used to it, trying to maybe have to stay a little later, trying to load that up. Because sometimes those packets can get a little thick, trying to load that information up for council. But that's the only way I can think of to try to get this information to you, so you can get it faster, get it, the full content is to try to break it down into sections where you can pull each item up differently, like item two would be different if you were in the PDF or the app, versus pulling the whole packet up. So, that's the only solution I have right now in person. But again, there are those other vendors out there, we, again, we'll talk, we'll deal with that later. That's almost a year away, so we'll, we'll travel that path when we get to it.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Any questions from councilors regarding this item? Councilor Abbott?
So, you said if we have our own iPad, but you mean like, a city iPad that's assigned to us that we take home?
Either one, if you have one at home, or if you have your own iPad.
Okay. So, just to give you an example-
Yes, ma'am.
-I go through the agenda, and I write notes all over everything, and I save them. So, with this new way of doing it, can I still do that?
See, if you have your own iPad at home, you just put the app on your iPad. You have to use the same credentials that you're using here to use the app. If you use those same credentials, everything that you put in there is your information, whether you're at home or here, whichever iPad you're on, as long as you use your credentials to get in.
Okay.
It'll still be there. Yes, ma'am.
As long as I can still do it, I'm happy?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Councilor O'Kane.
Yeah, that was really my question, too, is I like to, you know, write notes in the margins and highlight stuff. And, and as, as long as we have the capacity to still do that, I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, you should be able, no, you shouldn't have any problem with that. I, I'm thinking there's no limit to how many signings as far as, as long as you got your credentials. But I'll check on that as far as if there's a limit to how many different devices you can put the stuff on. But I don't think that's the issue. I don't think-
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions on this end? All right.
Just one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, but, okay, after we mark all our stuff up, we can still save it like we've been saving it? Because if I go, you know, if, if six months go by and I want to go back and look at the notes that I took-
And look at page two.
Okay.
This page two. So, it'll list all the council meetings that we've ever had. They're still there.
And my, and my notes will still be there. Because I can't remember what happened six months ago, and I have to read my notes. So-
But it'll be an inventory of all the council meetings we had.
Okay. As long as they're still there, I'm, I'm good.
Unless somebody deletes something.
I think that we're the two fanatical note takers over here. But it's just because after six months, I don't remember what we were doing. Something new came along. Thank you.
Thank you. I, we're very appreciative of this. I know at least two councilors are very looking forward to this. And-
So, let me ask this question.
Yes, sir.
How many, just don't use the paper aspect of council agenda, if you all use digital, who's all digital? Really?
I'm all digital.
Oh, wow.
I'm not paper. You're not paper.
Okay. That's the time on that part.
I was gonna say, we still have a paper packet.
Well, I'm saying, I'm not saying that part, of course. We're still delivering some paper, but it just lets me know that, hey, I'm making too many paper packets.
Killing those trees.
Killing too many trees. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Okay, so just give us a minute now, you know, like, like it's gonna happen this time.
Right. Right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, councilors, we're down to our last agenda item. And this is one that I know everyone has been waiting on. At this time, we will entertain discussion of the proposed FY23 budget. As we know, we went through a process where councilors have reviewed the budget, and questions have been submitted to administration that relate to those budget items. So, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mayor Whitman and Chief, and give you an opportunity, we'll go through these. Mr. Brown, did you pass out those copies already? I think some councilors already have brought their own. But we'll pass those out.
Madam President, thank you. In the interest of time-
Yes.
-we will actually yield and, and turn the floor back over to you, and get into much Q and A, as your, as your body desires.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, then, I will turn it over to our Budget and Finance Chair, Councilor Proten. Just gonna go through these items and with the questions. Thank you all. Again, thank you, Mayor Whitman and Chief. I know that you've taken a lot of time and effort to answer our questions. It doesn't look like, look like you did go with the request. You know, sometimes it just said, see page five, or see item 10. So, I do appreciate you-
That's what probably you can say.
-giving us more information. Thank you. All right, Madam Proten.
So, I guess it's the pleasure of this council.
Yes.
Do you, we don't have time to go through every question, but are there like, your top questions that you wanna have asked? Or do you guys have additional questions? Councilor O'Kane?
So, I, I'm guilty of not submitting a question, but I would, you could probably guess what I'm thinking on, you know, without me even telling you. So, my only question about the budget, or the, the, the one that's by far top of mind, is what are we doing for our public safety employees? You know, we have talked about, when we did the, the pay raise in April, we, a component of that was a recruitment and retention for paramedics. And, you know, at that time, I asked about recruitment and retention for BPD specifically. So, you know, if I recall correctly, I believe, Mayor Whitman, you indicated that that would be included in the proposed budget. So, you know, that, that's my number one concern is, you know, is our bus, the budget addressing the, the needs of our public safety employees?
Yes. So, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you three layers. In this proposed budget, you definitely have the rollover of the, the cost of living adjustment. In this budget, you have the proposed 5% merit increase as well for those longtime employees. In this budget, you have the proposed longevity pay as well for those long-term employees. And then you have for the officers on the public safety side, the uniform piece, that's in this budget. So, we're covering that cost. Recalling the surplus for their retention and recruitment, that, for the fire department that's in there. And then, we will be coming back before you, when we have it all figured out, and talking with legal, and talking with the, the Uniform Command Team related to the ARPA dollars, additional monies for recruitment and retention for BPD as well.
Okay. So, in short, the recruitment and retention is not necessarily, is not included in this proposed budget. That's gonna be a forthcoming proposal, that the funding for that will be allocated out of unencumbered ARPA-
Yes.
-funding.
Yes. But you've, for police, you've already approved retention for fire.
That's right. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other councilors that have any additional questions? Councilor Lewis?
Thank you. Mine's in, first one is in kinda relation to question 30. And really, just trying to see if there's anything else in the same category that may not currently show up on the budget that, but will be, where, where the plan is to amend it going somewhere in the future?
Yeah, so-
That's on page five. That's Grandview Medical Center.
So, we, a lot of the things that we try to be intentional about is about the things that deal with incentive agreements. Because if we budget just a nominal amount, we may not draw down no full amount, because based off of us auditing their books, based off of occupational tax or sales or use tax, or any type of construction cost, we, we will run into the position of not having to use that full amount that was budgeted, where we could've used it for something else. So, the intentional part of it now is, once we get their invoice from said incentive agreement or said organization, we will vet it through our IEL department and finance to basically do an audit or reconciliation of that invoice, and then come back before the council to actually amend the budget from the actual amount that was collected, and give it back to that organization as their incentive.
Yeah, I mean, I get that, but I'm just saying, how do we account for that?
We'll account for it, because it'll be actually collected.
Well, I guess, how do we make sure we have the money to pay that?
Because it'll be actually collected.
Okay. Okay, I got you now. What I mean, is that not included in your projection of revenue?
It is. That's, that's what we wanna make sure, because if it's not, then we don't have to pay them the full amount. So, say, for instance, if we budget a half of, 1.5, but they only, actually, we don't only collect it 1.2, that puts us at a deficit of $300,000 for us to put that somewhere else.
So, are you not, you're not projecting the revenue or the expense?
No.
Okay.
Not until they, we actually vetted, audited, and reconciled.
I got you. I think on 30, on VIA, was that, are they basically gonna explain the new routes? I think that was my question, more around the routes. Is that the one that's supposed to be at the next?
And I will ask this, if y'all could, because that was one of my notes, kinda talk about VIA on demand, because I think that's like, one of the top things for the council's priorities. I know quite a few councilors asked that question about like, the expansion.
Hello, Mr. Fowler.
Hello, good evening. So, again, James Fowler serves as the Director of the City's Department of Transportation. So, what's proposed in the budget is in addition to the ARPA money that was already assigned. And with those two allotments combined, it should effectively double the capacity that we've been using the system at. And so, we're gonna be going through a process with a consultant, and are going through that process with a consultant, and with the Transit Authority, to come back to you with proposed expansion areas and-
Okay. And I guess that, what's the timetable, I think, for being able to, I guess, implement the expansion piece?
So, our thinking is, one, we wanted to allow the Transit Authority to implement Bus Rapid Transit. And also, they had received, when Frank Martin was the Director, a proposal to reconfigure their routes. And so, the Transit Authority is reviewing that and should be completing their review of that, I think, this summer. And so, as we get to the end of the summer, the VIA staff have already put together some data in terms of where the needs are. And so, I would think the end of this summer, as, after we get through the World Games, around that time is when we should have some scenarios that we can come back and present to you all, and then probably implement all. That would be our reasonable target.
All right. Then I think I have just some clarity on the number 34.
Number 34 is providing details on the expanded partnership with BCS.
And so, I guess-
What's the question?
Number 34.
So, that's with the Birmingham State Schools, with the mental health services, on financial literacy piece with the Birmingham State Schools. He was asking for more information.
Yeah, so is this, is it gonna be a $4 million allocation? Or, because you got-
So, you have, you have the program- So you have, you have the programmatic piece of what we're doing for our youth. And then you have it, then you have it in different departments or organizations, if that makes sense. The biggest increase you all saw is, one of the increases, for example, is financial literacy. Total package for the financial literacy is actually, will be 2.1 million. But very similar to the promise, our money is half of it, is seed money. And then we'll go out here and raise the rest of the money. This robust curriculum is in partnership with the school system. But instead of that money going directly to them, then to pay the vendor, we engage the actual person that's building the curriculum first, and then they will engage the school system. So that, those funds are being housed in Division of Youth Services that is now a department in lieu of it being a division because that relationship with JCCO, JCCO no longer exists. But in addition to that, we want to elevate Youth Services and make it a priority, which is the main reason why we've made it a department as well. So the conflict resolution is not as built out as the financial literacy is. But for now, it's being housed in DYS instead of going to the school system. Birmingham Promise, of course, was in IEO, I believe. It's a separate, just the contract you've already approved, 2 million. Mental Health Services will go to the school system at 1 million. The Safe Havens will go to Park and Rec at 1 million. The Summer Jobs Program of 210 will go to Youth Services. And the reentry piece of 225 will be with Youth Services as well. And the Early Childhood Development piece will be Community Development. So it's spread out.
Okay. So I guess specifically this reading thing on, what is this, 34, that's gonna be in the DYS professional fees?
34, the mental health piece, this is a continuation. This started last year?
No, I'm telling you, this is, let's see, literacy program.
Yes, it's in the DYS Professional Services, yes.
Can we, I guess, all the stuff that is in different departmental budgets, like those programs you just ran off?
Yeah.
Get like a little.
We supplied Mr. McDaniels with a white sheet from y'all last budget hearing that outlined every allocation, but we'll share it again.
I may, maybe I missed it.
We can be sure that's recent. I know that.
Everybody else got.
Everybody got copies of those pieces.
Cool.
Thank you.
Are you done, Councilwoman? You got some more questions?
Trying to see what I was wanting. Oh, the zoo, the tax thing at the zoo.
Yeah, we needed some clarity on that question.
The sidewalk connector.
No, this is associated with, I guess, what they pay back in taxes. I think there was some request around reducing their tax liability, maybe.
Are you talking about the zoo?
Yeah, zoo.
Okay.
Yeah. This is 42, I'm sorry.
So, okay, I think I'm following you. So prior to, I think, most of the people on this council, maybe, I think you were here, they, we did have a agreement with the zoo where we rebated sales and use tax up to $180,000 a year that has expired. But we are in negotiation with the zoo to develop a similar type of rebate for them. But it's gonna be more incentive-based, based on how they produce their revenues. And that will become for the council pretty soon, I hope. We're still, our attorneys and their attorneys are going back and forth. So we are working on an incentive agreement with the zoo.
Okay. And I think the last question I got is around 37. This is more of a request and maybe, just making sure we're clear, when we're doing these paving contracts, I guess, making sure if something is not, because my understanding was that it was in the contract that we approved, which would have been, I don't know, fourth quarter 2020, maybe? Something like that, but the fund, apparently the funding source that was tied to this specific road kind of created an additional process. So if it's not, can we get that information? If a specific road is not gonna move with the rest of the roads listed in terms of actual execution? Is there a way to separate that out so we at least can communicate that correctly?
Yeah, we can, but I just want to be mindful of the council that we really try to make our dollars stretch. So we do go out there, a lot of grants. And of course, that sometimes stalls the process, but it allows us to let our dollars stretch to get more done. But we hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I just don't want to communicate it wrong to residents.
Yes, sir. Totally agree. Got you.
All right.
Alda is supposed to bid the project out third and no later than the fourth quarter this year. We'll construction start next year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anybody else with a question?
I have one.
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, and this piggybacks a little bit on Councilwoman Wood's question. And I know you've given us a very detailed response with Item Number 39 regarding our strategic pavement management plan. But just for some transparency for our residents, I know that in a lot of the neighborhood meetings, we talked about the 15 million that's been allocated to paving. And often residents have a question about, well, my street, where's my street in this plan? And when we talk about it's a five-year plan. So I know you have it written here for us, but I just wanted to, if you could just give us a little overview so that residents can be transparent to that process and that we're sure that we're providing the right information during our neighborhood meetings. And you don't have to get real detail, but just the high level, I think, would be helpful. Thank you.
So what we're operating off of currently is data that was collected several years ago, and I think actually, seven or more years ago. And it's citywide data where inspectors went out and raided the streets. And that's a pretty big effort. And since that time, you've not been able to ask the city to go out and effort, that evaluation effort, with the exception of, we did receive some consultants to update some of it. And that was just a couple of years ago. So the planning that we're doing now is based off of data that has been somewhat updated, but is very imperfect. And for thousands of miles of streets, we really want to be smart about how we do that. And I think that's what some people are seeing when they're seeing. Before we issue a contract currently, we do actually go out and look at the segments that we're going to resurface to be sure that they do need to be resurfaced. I don't think we're resurfacing anything that doesn't need it. But with the thin resources that we have stretched across the city, probably some people do say, well, why are we doing this one instead of that one? And so what's proposed in the budget is a pavement management plan where we would actually hire a consultant to update a lot of that data. So citywide, going out and raiding streets across several thousand miles of roadway. And then also just providing some additional training for our staff so that we can continue to do a lot of that updating, standing up our roadway system in a software. So there's a lot of components that we would use to, you know, maybe not this ball gets started with that, but start to build that data so that in future packages, we're aware about how we're resurfacing roadway.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I could also, I'm glad you gave some clarification because when a resident tells me, well, they paved tempers to drive, but we've got 10 blocks of Jefferson Avenue that you barely have to drive in the middle of the road. You can't use the two existing lanes. And so would this type program then help to write that a little more as far as with the perception that, why are we paving this road that didn't seem as in bad repair as we've got this long stretch within the district that needs paving?
Good question, and I think the best way to answer that is, a lot of the reason why we're seeing some of that frustration where someone sees one street getting paved, but the next street over also needs to be paved, is just because there are so many streets and our infrastructure has declined over decades. And so it's an investment to elevate the current condition of our roadway. Since, over the last few years, it seems that we are consistently increasing our allocations towards the street resurfacing. And so the street pavement management plan that's allocated, that will help just by having good data collection. But also just that increased investment will probably help just as much being consistent with the government.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councilmore, and then Council, Dr. O'Quinn.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. A question, will this program help to, I guess, assess the severity or need of certain roads? And not necessarily prioritize them in a certain way? Because I know that, you know, when you look at roads like Lawson Road that you could literally tear your car up and feel like you're on a roller coaster. Or, you know, even on the backside of Engle Nook, you know, close to Tarrant, you know, going on those roads, they need some serious help. And so will this program kind of help to prioritize that as you assess?
Yes, sir. So it would assign a score to each roadway based on an index. So likely it would be 0 to 100, and it's kind of score. And so citywide, we would be able to map kind of what those scores were. Also be some notes included about each road in terms of what it appears is the depth of the problem sometimes. They're the same, but there might actually be some other line of issues. So it would help us have that data for both of those.
Madam President, I just want to elaborate a little bit more on that because, Mr. Moore, because you haven't been here, but most of our streets were rated on a score of 1 to 5. And that really didn't give you, it was very subjective. And to allow us to expand into a report card, per se, to, you know, see what a street is rated at a certain year and what it could be on down the line, will give us more time to let our money work to do more deferred maintenance to certain roads instead of paving an entire roadway. We already know that within two, three years, if we do this type of maintenance, it may last, it may add more longevity to such road, you know, said roadway. So I think that's what we're trying to do with this strategic management plan.
Madam President and Council, I think, when you do a 1 to 5, that's not only subjective, I think it got very political. I'm not sure if anybody was here except Ms. Abbott, but, well, I think you already know that.
Yeah.
I think this puts us in a position to be able to be not, not objective and take the politics out. So when we look at infrastructure, prioritizing things based on the need, not necessarily the want.
Thank you.
You go to Councilmore, or do you have another question?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think it would be worth, you know, us driving a van or a car over certain roads together just so we could see how much we, you know, bounce around in the car to see which ones need to be put on the priority list, but.
I don't know about that one, man. Council O'Quinn.
Yeah, so Director Fowler, I mean, I think you and me are thinking on the same wavelength, Councilmore. You know, the 1 to 5 system was based on visual inspection largely. And, you know, one of the things that I've learned in my time here is that you can actually, you know, diagnose what's going on subsurface by, you know, seeing what types of patterns, types of cracking and things. You can tell what's going on subsurface. But as I mentioned earlier, you know, I'd like to see the city move in the direction of, you know, the 21st century and utilizing technology. And one of the things that we looked at early on when I first came onto the council and was Chair of the Transportation Committee and Fred Hawkins, the city engineer, was still here, was the use of ground penetrating radar. And that technology has really, you know, advanced quite a bit. And, you know, literally, you can drive a van around town and it's collecting the data in real time. And, you know, you don't have to go slow or anything, it's just. So in our strategic pavement management plan, you said some things that indicated to me that that may be a component. I would endorse that. The other thing that you mentioned in terms of, Councilmore, in terms of, you know, getting in a van and riding around feeling how bumpy the roads are, I mean, I think this type of technology also captures that type of data. But, and there's tremendous capacity for us to capture that type of information. You know, one of the things I didn't ask Director Yates, but, you know, we send our garbage trucks up and down every street in the city of Birmingham every week. And they have the capacity there for, because they're on every block of every street in the city of Birmingham, they have the capacity to capture a lot of information. And capturing where the potholes are is not a great leap. The vehicles are already there. And adding that capacity to something like a garbage truck is not a huge technology challenge. But there, so there are multiple ways that we could get that type of information, whether it be through a consultant, you know, as a component of the strategic pavement management plan, or sort of in-house on our own vehicles that are already operating on our streets.
Comment on that. So the intent would be to work with consultants to evaluate proposals to use whatever is some of the most current.
Yeah, and one other thing that is a gripe we hear about all the time is when our utilities companies are penetrating the street and they make repairs, that type of technology would be very useful in quality controlling the repair. A lot of times when they do these permanent patches, you know, you have to judge the quality of the patch just based on what you can see at the surface. And you won't know if that patch was substandard until, you know, months down the road when it stopped, the ground starts to subside underneath it. But with technology like ground penetrating radar, you could go out after the permanent patch was put in place and be able to see those subsurface layers and better assess the quality of the patch. So I just have to throw that in, out there.
Thank you, Council O'Quinn. Madam President.
And thank you. To piggyback on Council O'Quinn's discussion about utilities, and of course, after we paid the money and we paved our streets, of course, we know there's work they have to do. But we have been informed about just one utility, a new process called micro trenching, where they go at a surface of the street to put down fiber so it doesn't tear up as much of the street. So it's something that we'd like to explore through just technology, the Utilities Committee, is just to have a conversation and allow that presentation. So it may be, as we go and move more into the new century, our new technology is something we could also explore. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Uh, yes, who is it? Council Abbott?
Yes, I wanted to ask a question about Item 18 on Page 3. This is the item about damage to city property. We discovered in Highland Park in Five Points South that the police department does write a report about people who crash into city property and damage it. But they don't provide it to the Office of the City Attorney. And so we're not collecting all of the money for damages. And I know that y'all that drive over the mountain by Vulcan have seen the "Welcome to Five Points South" sign that's been crashed into for five years now. And that woman who crashed into it, never, her insurance company never paid for it because, you know, the law department didn't get the information. So the question, you know, the answer, the response says, "The council routinely approves insurance reimbursements from the collections of damage to city property." Well, that's. Well, that's true, but we're missing out on a lot of it because even when the police department writes up an accident report and say that someone crashed into something, it doesn't get to the people who are going to go after them. So that was my question. I mean, can we, can we do something about that?
Madam President, to Ms. Abbott's question, the answer is yes. I think unfortunately, no one from legal department is here, but I believe that Mr. Cooper, who's over litigation, over the entire litigation team, I think we have no problem, which I know in some cases they already do aggressively go after the actual insurance company instead of the person. So, do we have a claim insurer? We actually have a claim insurer, Nathaniel Bagley. So that work is already in place. I think that what we can do is let them present to the council kind of their process, because I'm not in a position to articulate to you A through Z how it works.
Well, the police department was the one that told the neighborhood people that they don't send the reports to the office of the city attorney. I mean, they volunteered that information to the neighborhood association, people who were trying to get some things repaired that had been crashed into by errant drivers.
We'll close that gap.
Yeah, so it was just, I mean, it seems like a simple thing, but I realize nothing is really simple. And then the other question I have is on page five, item 29. I don't even understand the response, so I was hopeful that you could explain it. This is about the Applebee's incentive increasing from 50,000 to 94,000?
So I can answer that the best I can, or Ms. Clark can do it, because she was here when that whole deal was struck. So that piece of property was done in a cooperative district. And so that was the mechanism that we used to allow that developer to develop that land, i.e. the Regions Bank building and the Applebee's building. So all the proceeds from that, the taxes from that goes to pay down the debt related to the Applebee's site and the Regions Bank site.
Okay, so Applebee's is not really getting an incentive?
No, we just use that as the, because that's the piece of property that's actually generating revenue to pay down the debt to the cooperative.
Okay.
So the city owns the?
Oh, yeah, we own, yes, we own the land, yes.
Okay, but the Regions property, I thought we sold it to a lawyer.
We did.
But the Applebee's still belongs to us.
Correct.
So we're projecting that the Applebee's is going to be doing more revenue? Is that basically?
Yes, basically.
Yeah, $44,000 more.
Part of that is the one, they closed the one investment, and people of Applebee's, they will come to Five Points West.
Two for 20 is all really good.
Okay, well, that's good to know. We better run over to that other district and eat some Applebee's food. We didn't, I just didn't know.
It's actually pretty good. Okay, Council Clark?
It went out. Just because it's green, it doesn't mean anything. Well, mine is different, green means on. Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yeah.
Okay. So, Mayor, I just wanted to ask about the revenue projection. I know in this, it says that they are conservative. The answer says that these are conservative. I just wanted to ask about specific business license and lodging. I know we're, I know the sports and entertainment does a lot more lodging, for lodging tax than, I mean, tourism does too, but we're not doing the conventions like we used to back since COVID. So what's driving? I guess I just wanted to understand some of the rationale and drivers behind the lodging tax and also the business license, because this is a pretty big.
Absolutely. So the street language would be is we outside. And I'm being funny, but like post-COVID, people are out. The, let me go out, let me just go global first and then I'll come back in. This budget is based on sales and use tax, right? Lodging tax, occupational, lease rent, business license, and app loan. So I know you asked about two of those, but just sales, sales and use tax, for example, in 19, I think we budgeted 176 million, but I think our actual, by the end of the year was 180 million. So it was actually, we budgeted below, that was a 3.5 above our budget. Of course, we know what happened during the next year in 2020, the coronavirus. 2021, we budgeted at 147 and actually ended up being 187. And then.
So what page are you on? I'm just trying.
It's not a page, it's just a, I made this note because I knew one, a minimum of one, possibly two of you all asked us about.
It asked us.
About why those, why those projections are so high, right? Fair question. Last year, we budgeted for sales taxes 173 million. It actually ended up being 207. The actual was 207. And that's literally 11% above what we budgeted. We're very, not we, they're very conservative in the finance department. Doesn't matter if it's Lester Smith's team or Kevin Morris's team. We didn't max out for our sales tax that you have before you, 230 million. I don't think we did. We did not do that. And so we know the sales taxes will be higher this year. And the reason the sales tax is going to be higher this year because it's going to one of your, part of your question was the business license. So again, you had the 2021 coronavirus, we, there was a $48 million budget, the actual was 73. Last year's budget, that ended June 30. We budgeted for business license 57 million, 57.1 million. It came in at 83.2. People, they literally are outside, they want to do business in the city of Birmingham. So.
We don't, we don't have a relative, we don't have that number that we actually performed last.
It's in your CAFR. You have it, it's just in your CAFR. I was just.
It's not in here, though?
No.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be, every year is never in there.
The 22 amended number is not what we actually did.
So I kind of think what she's asking, which was one of my questions, I don't know if we got a quarterly report, but my request is asking for a year-to-date for all of the taxes from the end of April 2021 to April of this year, which I'm not faulting anybody or anything, I just want that as I go through the budget.
Okay, so the monthly report is in OpenGov? I think we've shared that with the council, but the numbers that we are presenting to the council are actually audited numbers that were in a comprehensive audit. So we can show you the numbers in a graph to let you see the major categories. These aren't arbitrary numbers, these are trends based off of the audited numbers that the outside auditors looked at our books and gave us a true number based off of our bank reconciliation numbers. So we, as the mayor stated, we had a actual max number that we could have went up to, but we didn't because we wanted to be conservative based off of trends in the economy and just the potential of a recession. So we actually budgeted much lower than what we really could have done.
517 is actually lower than what our orders tell us what our projected budget could be.
Yes.
517 is intentionally conservative, it's below what we believe our sales, but that's intentional every year, right?
So this isn't like to question the finance, Chaz, you know, I love you. This isn't a question of the finance department or any person, it's just you guys have the numbers and we don't. It's just a lot easier, you know, and that's part of our job to see these numbers and see if this will help us with the budget. So really just asking for the numbers.
Yeah, we're presenting it again, because I think Chief Moore did when we gave you the annual audit, it's no different than those numbers. We just, we're using internal trends that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I guess my concern is just that we, this is all we have to really evaluate the budget proposal, and we're, the number you're presenting is next to some trend numbers that aren't the real numbers, right? I mean, is the amended 2022?
They're not, no, they're not saying it's not real numbers.
But it's not the actual 2022.
We're not, we're not finished with this fiscal year yet, so we're basing everything that's presented in the proposal, but it is a projection.
Right.
That's why you have to ask for certain months, because we're not done.
Okay, so the numbers you, okay, let's just take one example so I can understand. So you're saying for, you know, we're projecting 80 million in business license revenues in fiscal year 2023, and what, our actual in what, 2021 or 2022 was already 80 something? As opposed to the 57? I'm on page 27. Just kind of like use an example to help me understand what you're saying.
The answer is yes. We are projecting those business license to be 80 million. Last year, they ended at 83 million.
Last year being at the end of fiscal year 21?
22. Oh, yes, I'm.
21?
22. Oh, I'm sorry, 21.
Okay, but we're seeing that, 21 ended at 7 instead of at 80. So that's why my question, because.
So Council Clark?
Actually, 21 ended at 73. 21 was 73, 73.8.
Okay.
So I think to lessen a bit confusion, we'll, let us, we'll provide you the sheet that we use internally, because a lot of things that you see in this book are lumped into one category. So as you see, business license, that includes sales and use tax, but we separate it on this because we have to show them differently than the actual business license tax.
But you got sales and use tax and other lines on this?
Yeah, I understand, but if you see under the business license, that includes the actual general business license category, which is a very large revenue-producing category. So our internal document that we try to see trends on separates the actual sales and use tax and business license. This one in the book combines them both because they're considered business taxes.
Well, the other thing I was going to ask is because we might be heading into some economic uncertainty, I hope we're not, can we, and I guess I'm asking you this too, Madam Pro Tim, can we have, I know we get the blue books, but as you close out each quarter, could we do some sort of sit-down reconciliation? Because we're also budgeting at full employment, but we know we don't have full employment. We've got labor shortages in a lot of our areas. So, you know, just so we can look at how both the revenue side and the expense side are performing on a quarterly basis as a team.
Well, that's why I asked for the quarterly report, and that's what we usually get. And I think they started sending it to Cheryl and Jeff electronically, but I, well, it depends on mayor's office.
Sit down and go through it.
Well, just, so there is no quarterly report. I do want to remind everybody, you get your monthly booklet.
Right.
But if you want to sit down and talk about your monthly booklet, booklet, we could sit down and talk about it when you want.
And I want to sit down monthly, I just want to see how, just sit down and talk about how we're doing based on projections and, you know, positions that are going unfilled.
Absolutely.
So what is that doing? And particularly because we might be heading into some like, not predictable for times, like.
For us to provide your information, we have no problem doing that.
But sitting down, going through it together, as opposed to giving us a book?
If we're going over to provide your information, we have no problem doing that.
Okay.
That's what you want, correct?
I mean, subject to the Pro Tim agreeing, I mean.
No.
You just want, you just want, you want us to take the blue book you get every month monthly and just give you, you want a presentation?
So they, didn't they actually used to do this, the old council back in the day, which was why they had committee of the whole at the end of the month?
Oh, they did that, huh?
I know we're not going to do it now, but.
It wasn't every, it wasn't every single month, but we used to do it, you know, mid-year.
Mid-year, yeah.
And then mid-year moved to April and it was almost over, so, you know.
So like, more like a budget reconciliation, some midpoint, but I don't know, maybe, I was thinking quarterly, but mid-year would be fine.
Yeah, I think COVID just kind of threw things off too, so I'm sure, it's up to the mayor.
Got you.
Okay, cool.
Hey, Council Abbott?
Yeah, I did find two others that I had marked on page four of the questions, item 21, about the unemployment compensation tripling. It says that it's based on the last two years' tread payments, and I don't know what a tread payment is.
Madam President, to Ms. Abbott, I apologize, A should be N, that's trend.
Oh, trend?
Yes, that is a typo.
Okay, and then it says HR is working to clean up appeals for unemployment. I guess that's compensation.
Oh, we're just totally messing up.
Okay, so where there were false claims filed, maybe.
S should be D.
And are under appeal. So, but this is the question, I mean, aside from all those strange words that have been, somebody must have been dictating or something.
Very strange words, yes, ma'am.
Anyway, so what you're saying is that there are a whole lot of claims that have been made where HR thought that they were false claims and the people are appealing them and that HR thinks they're going to lose, so that's why we're tripling the amount of money?
Actually, we are appealing claims that we feel that are falsified. But if you recall, in one of these two years that you were referring to, where we've had a budget here, but we've had to come back to you in the middle of fiscal year to say, hey, we need more money, we've had some outliers, but we've also had some trend. So based on these two years, we don't believe it's in the city's best interest to keep budgeting at this point when we have to come back to you in the middle of the fiscal year based on what's happened in the last two years, which is why you see the increase from 300,000.
Okay, so we're appealing?
Yes.
Okay. I thought we turned the people down and they were appealing, but, okay. And then the other question is about item 23 on that same page, about the mayor's association increasing by $28,000. And it says that it's based on the population, but our population went down and our amount increased by $28,000. So how does that work?
I don't know. I don't want to even give them more money, but I'm serious, but.
What do they do with that money?
That's based on the 20, that's based on the 2020 census figure, which put us at 200,000.
We lost population, but our contributions going up by $28,000. So it says we're being charged 20 cents per person, is that like double what they used to charge?
No, it was, it was an accounting error that we had between this general ledger account and the African-American mayor's association, so we're just trying to correct that. It was underfunded for the last couple of years.
Well, why didn't you say that?
I.
I mean, that would have made me understand it if you just told me we had an accounting error and now we're trying to make up for.
I think we were just trying to answer the question as it was presented.
Page four.
Okay. I got it.
Is there anybody else that has a question that has not spoken? Okay, well, my questions weren't answered, I'm not going to go through all of them in the interest of time, but, one of my biggest questions, I think Council Abbott has mentioned this, why is there not more funding going towards the sidewalks? And if we're getting grant money from the sidewalks, have we gotten any already?
Just want you to know, that's why James Fowler was here, to answer that actual question.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but you know, I was trying to be.
It's all good.
Nice. Later, bye.
So we've prioritized neighborhood revitalization. So, we've prioritized, um, neighborhood revitalization, let's start there. We put more money in blight removal versus weed abatement, we put more money in street paving versus sidewalks. Not saying that sidewalks are, I'm not saying that sidewalks are more important than streets, and I'm not saying cutting grass is more important than the bladed structure. You all, all heard me give the, give the, the picture, describe the narrative of the mother grandmother on the porch. Those four things are the consistent theme of remove the blight, cut the lot, pave the street, fix the sidewalk. But in order, over those first four years in the, in the first term, we put more money in the actual paving the street and removing the blight. On the sidewalk piece, what we are doing is very similar to what Chad described earlier, where you bundle, you see, why is this street paved, or that street is not paved? Well, the NPO, for example, the street that was in Counselor Woods' district, for example, that he spoke to, going to the NPO allows us to not only stretch that dollar, um, but do a packet from a bond standpoint, and we can pave more streets. The sidewalks is very, very similar, everybody. What we are doing is wanting to take this money and do a package deal that gets us a minimum of, oh, definitely let him finish, because I, come on up, sir. I'm just going to let him finish, I'm just going to stop right in the middle.
Yeah, thank you for coming back.
Regarding sidewalks?
Yeah, what we talked about in your office a few weeks back.
Um, and just, can I hear the question?
So, I was asking why there wasn't more funding going towards sidewalks in the budget? Um, that's basically the question, why isn't there more?
Um, so, a city that's our size, where obviously a lot of our population has left the city, we have a lot of decaying infrastructure, so the priority has been first around resurfacing. Uh, it's expensive, we would probably collectively want to invest more in resurfacing if we, if we could, um, and so, a second priority would be sidewalks. Um, and so, what we're trying to do with the money that is allocated for sidewalks, so there was a previous allocation for 500,000, and we leveraged that to achieve grant money for that, which is a slow process, but with that 500,000, we're actually doing a $2 million project. Um, and so, we've been a little slow to spend the next allocation after that, because we would like to actually try to repeat that process. Um, and so, with the money that we are able to allocate to sidewalks, um, our goal would be to try to use that as match money to grow that as much as possible, even though I know that's a slow process, and just stretch it out longer.
Okay, so, is, yes, ma'am, you can ask your question.
It's your question, but I just wanted to ask, because this actually came up in a neighborhood meeting yesterday, so I wish you had been there with me. But, um, so the 225, that's the proposed in the budget. We've already had, I think, a five-year plan that was already in the works, four sidewalks, so that money is already allocated for those five, is this being given as another 225?
Glad you asked that question. So, so similar to paving, you know, I think we started off years ago with best of intentions, by developing a five-year plan, and I'm not sure exactly what terminology was used, I cannot recall, it was over years ago, sidewalks, um, but it's not necessarily a funded plan tied to a certain fiscal, it is a, um, evaluation of all the sidewalks, and then priorities have been picked out, um, that, as funding becomes available, we will invest in those priorities. And so, uh, that $2 million is going towards some of those very first priorities, and so the next package behind that would go towards some of those. And it'll be good to move away from using your terminology.
Yeah.
But that's how we're moving through the priorities.
And I guess my request, and these requests have already been submitted to 311 in the Mayor's Office, um, I ask because, for example, in West End, you know where Princeton Towers is, a lot of the elderly are handicapped, and they have complained over the last three years since I've been in office, I can't roll my wheelchair down the sidewalk because it's too bumpy, or the sidewalks that are near schools, for example, because I think there's a difference, when we look at the sidewalks, between, oh, there's a sidewalk in front of my house, versus a sidewalk where people are walking every day. So I think it helps explain that, so we can tell people, we have money coming up for these sidewalks.
But isn't there prioritization if it's an ADA issue, or if it's some type of issue?
Zoneless.
Is it, is there, or?
So, um, accessibility was a, one of the considerations, and how the plan was developed and prioritization, as are other things like proximity to school, parks, so there were a, a layer of different considerations. Um, sidewalks, uh, you know, if a sidewalk is impassable, then it's inaccessible. Yeah, it's inaccessible. The high priority projects that we identified citywide are ultimately some of them. Um, and so, we're investing in those priorities, uh, as funding becomes available, noting that our infrastructure, uh, in the city of Birmingham, whether it's paving sidewalks or the main category of infrastructure.
Okay, uh, Council Clark, and then Council Abbott?
Yeah, so, am I hearing you say, like, the money in the operating budget is more for assessment and planning and that, and CMA, match, would that be in the capital budget, or would that be in the operating budget? I'm just a little confused.
Let me clarify, so the money that's in there would be for projects, that's in the operating budget, uh, would be for projects. What we would like to do with it, um, and if, for some reason, we're unsuccessful and we just want to start investing directly in projects, we can do that, but preference would be leverage that money for match money to match with grants, um, like CMA, you, or any amount through the legislature. Like, so you use that money for projects, uh, that's specific.
I'm still wondering, I guess, I hear you get that, but I guess I'm wondering, would it be in the capital budget?
Um, it, technically, it will be if Mr. Fowler is able to get the actual grant, then we would transfer that to a grant match category-
I see.
-to flip the 500,000 to a $2 million allocation. We would take it out of the operating budget.
It would become allocated to the capital budget?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Council Abbott?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. I want to know where the money is to fix the sidewalks that are a safety hazard, like the ones that are heaved up six inches, and people can't walk or roll over them. Where is the funding to fix those?
So, those kinds of issues are throughout the city, um, and so there's not a, a separate set aside group of funding for that, it's a part of the sidewalk plan, um, and so those are woven into all those high priority projects that are identified, and the plan identified $200 million worth of sidewalk backlog needs. Um, and so, that money just disappears very quickly, such a small amount versus the overall liability, that, um, not a separate pot for, for those issues, system-wide, for a part of that $200 million.
Okay, well, so, this is my question. If a par- if, if people are reporting those safety hazards, and we don't do anything, and someone is injured, does that not put us in a really tenuous position to have known that there was a safety hazard and then not to have addressed it? Does that not put us like in jeopardy?
It's a good question, we'll ask the legal department.
Okay, thank you, because I, that concerns me a lot, the things that are true, I mean, it's one thing to have cracks.
Yeah.
They're unsightly, but the tripping hazards, you know, the safety hazards, the ones that are dire, like the sidewalk is heaved up six inches, well, you'd hope somebody could see it, but maybe they don't have good vision, and then when they get hurt, somebody says, oh, well, I reported that. Where does that leave us?
Yeah.
So, good, I look forward to hearing from the legal department.
Okay. Council Lewis?
Thank you, glad you came back, I almost forgot about, uh, number 35, which was the traffic safety piece, and trying to get a clarity on what that amount is, that you kind of had, is that the same as what we did last year?
I think what was included this year is a hundred thousand.
Yes, we put it in there.
Okay, I believe it's 100,000, so what was allocated in the previous year's budget was 50,000, and so, what we're proposing is, is to double that, um, and we have, um, been pretty successful, I would say, in being able to use that money to match with the neighborhood funds from some places, in case the council's funded, or other sources, uh, to grow that. And so that's about the capacity at which we can evaluate and move through those projects, uh, so it represents kind of a doubling of what we've done the previous year, um, if that's on your record.
Okay.
Are you, are you, he's not done, you done?
Yeah, what's your, what's the current cost of a speed cushion?
So, it varies based on width of the roadway and the type that we use, whether it's a solid speed pump that goes across the lip, or whether it's-
Divide it up, so, um, a typical location, so I'll just paraphrase it that way, so a typical location for speed cushions, all are divided devices, um, around $1,500 per location, but it may vary, uh, depending on purchase of the device. Yeah, I know we, like, looking at putting a lot of money into road paving and different issues like that, and I know you're on the cutting edge of transportation options, uh, in your professional opinion, how far away from flying cars, uh, do you believe we are?
[laughing]
Professional. I guess you, you can talk to me later.
Oh, Lord, uh, Council Safety, Council Lewis.
Director Fowler, um, like, the cost, you know, of a speed cushion, because just like you said, an example would be a street in Smithfield Estates, I cannot think of the name of that street, Esophery, I can't think of the name of that street, but just very interested in, you know, like, the cost of a speed cushion that could go on that street, I cannot think of that street.
So, Madam, Madam President-
With a speed at.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we have staff assigned, that if you work through Ms. Camila Gray-Lewis, we have staff assigned from B-Dot, that I think he has been meeting with a, a vast majority of the council about speed cushions and so forth, so we can keep that going, so if we have, council has any question, just finally through-
I'm glad you thought of that, because, um, I know Mr. Alexander, the reason I know he has the same last name-
Mr. Colin Alexander.
And Colin Alexander, I know he has met with, um, the majority of us, so those type of questions, we'll be, we'll be sure to make those specific. And I do want to say that the mayor has been gracious enough, and I think we've already said before, if councilors following this meeting have some individual questions-
Look forward to it.
-one-on-ones.
Yeah, absolutely, and let's make sure Ms., um, your colleague, Ms. Tate-
Gets the que- answer, perfect.
-that gentleman for the speaker.
Okay.
Well, I think Council Williams still had a question.
Okay.
Our comment.
No, my, my, this is actually more really a request, and so, I, I don't know if we discussed it earlier, but when was the last time we actually were issued a blue book?
Every-
I'm electronic.
They come in, they're not paper, they're electronic.
It's electronic now.
Because when you go back and look at it online, uh, the last, it's, it's dated September of 2021, is the electronic one, so-
We'll, we'll forward you the most recent report, I think that was shared already with the council, we'll, we'll forward it again.
I guess we didn't open it, but-
Yeah.
Yeah, it was September 2021 was the one.
We'll get that resent.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be glad to resend that again.
Okay, uh, y'all, can I just ask a couple more questions? A couple more questions, because mine weren't answered, um-
Madam Pro Tem, please forgive me, does, with you, does you have any more questions related to Mr. Fowler, related to transportation?
Okay, well, look, Council-
They would let him go.
Just, uh, before, um, you leave, I wanted to ask about the CMAK funding for sidewalks, specifically, um, I agree, if we have the opportunity to multiply our allocations and, you know, leverage, uh, additional federal monies, um, that's a good strategy, but, w-, you know, that is a, generally, um, that's a slower process, um, how much slower are we talking about? I mean, I know on a typical federal project, you know, maybe five years, you know, uh-
It could be, yeah, four years, uh, five years, it could become that. Um, I would still recommend that, though, because if we do that on a yearly or a annual basis, we'll apply our money greatly as long as we're consistently on, and we'll see. Um, and then additionally, um, you know, I don't know that we know everything that's coming up with the investment structure bill, uh, but it's possible that we could leverage money through some. Uh, but to your point, it is a slow process.
Okay, Council Clark, did you have something for Mr. Fowler? Oh, okay, anybody else have anything for Mr. Fowler?
I do have one.
Yeah, Council Williams.
So, it sounds like from the, from the sidewalk improvement program, or whatever we're calling it, where we're, um, where, where we're trying to, to, to multiply our funding allocation by matching it with federal dollars, that we're really only tackling one specific project.
Uh, so, for example, the first round, $2 million project, I'm afraid, project, but it's a collection, just like our resurfacing projects, of many different locations, highest priority within that one.
Okay.
So, it's a collection of different-
Was that the on, so did that include, was that the ramps, the ADA ramps, or was that something different?
Uh, there will be ramps as a part of that, um, there's a few places where we see ramps, uh, one, uh, when we do resurfacing projects, we may be required at locations to, also investing in ramps. Part of the working, so there's a $1,000 allocation for that, so we may have seen some installed, um, over the last few months because of that, um, but there are ramps that are definitely included at the point.
Okay, and so, I guess this fiscal year, we don't have, we haven't been, we don't have a grant, we haven't been awarded a QMAC or whatever, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
QMAC, LMAC.
I guess, and I'll just ask a couple of my questions, and I'll just resend them to Chad, and send them to Mayor Woodfin. Uh, you may have already answered this just in the past, what do we do with any leftover funding from completed capital projects? I know sometimes we transfer them to other capital projects, but what if we haven't done that?
So, once the projects are completed, um, capital projects, of course, they have this closeout process, which includes, um, enduring all liens, that the closeout actual documents are submitted, generally the funds, for most of these projects that I've seen over four years, I know that y'all have seen as well, they're too small for us, too small for our issues, um, so, I know the team, Ms. Bell and others, including Chad and Kevin, believe that the best strategy is to move the funds to close, close to the remaining, the remaining funds on a loophole, or for projects that are underfunded. Um, I, I would say, which has not happened, that I'm aware of, but if large amounts are left, we could use those projects, we can use those funds for a similar project in nature.
Okay, um, and really what I'm thinking right now is whether there's like a new capital project, so like, for example, um, to the Sill Library, for example, we're going to have to address that issue of they need a new foundation, because that's like a whole different issue, other than it being like flooded out, or different things like that, would we be able to use leftover capital money for that, or would we just have to go after-
So I would, so I would say no to that, the- The reason, reasoning being that there are some outstanding projects that I know the 10 of us want closed out. If we say, if we say we were going to do a project and the reason why it hasn't been done, done yet is because we're short funding in an order. If there's monies left over for another project that's complete, let's, let's close the loop on this, on that other project being short changed to go ahead and execute on it and complete it. From a, using your example of Tittisville, I believe that it is an imperative, and I know every one of you all would agree with me, that, you know, post COVID, post refinancing, post drawing down a lot of our debt, being in a position that our general fund budgets continue to increase. We cleared one tranche of Opera Fund, we're in the second tranche. Our general fund still doesn't get us what we want wholesale, right? That you have facilities that include rec centers, that include libraries, that include fire stations, and then other facilities, whether it's our municipal court or city council chamber. And I can go on and on of a host of categories where one category is facilities, where there are hosts of them. But you have streets that are a category. You have stormwater, that's a category, and possibly some other categories here. The bottom line is one word, bonds. We need to go to the market. The team, at a certain point, just literally in order in our steps.
Okay.
We're going through the opera process, we're going through our budget. We're close to clearing one of these hurdles in the form of this proposed budget to you. I believe we can then, team can go to work on actual engaging in bonds versus warrants, appetite of not just the council, but the public, based on which one of those we do. How much can we go after, based on what our financial advisors tell us? And then those categories where if it was up to me, a lot will be for the building categories alone, or facilities categories alone, fire stations and libraries. But there are other facilities that need a lot of love and attention as well.
So, and I completely understand that, and I know this is just one district, but unfortunately, when that letter was sent out during Classic Weekend as being one of the last libraries, this is one of the things I always hear every neighborhood meeting, every neighborhood president gathering, like this is something I always hear. And that library is very utilized. So this isn't like a library that mainly only gets like two people for a week. This is like people using like the computers and everything else. But it's helpful to know that we would go, there's a possibility of us going to the bond market. Because if I tell them, if I tell my residents, we aren't really prioritizing this library and if we have the opportunity to have funding, they would hand me my butt and they probably would hand yours too. Because I don't want it to be that we don't prioritize that, and this is something very passionate. In fact, I honestly think the community can fundraise the dollars. And I'm also just requesting publicly that you help me out, that y'all help me out when that time comes, because I have asked the library board for a quote, y'all know this. So when the time comes and they do give us a quote, that you just kind of just help us out. And not just that library, but other people's libraries, by going to speak for my district.
Well, I think from what I've seen in the past, when you go to the bond market and you have these categories, you strike this balance of need. And then working with councilors, prioritizing, but working with the public in that prioritization as well.
Yeah, but it's like a foundation issue. Like that's a completely, that's the whole building. You know, you basically have to almost tear it down and build up a new library. That's a different issue.
Understood. Understand.
I'll just, and last, I'll just send you my other questions. How much is going towards personnel for the new programming for the youth? So, you know, for different programming, you guys have seen this, you'll see in a budget, this amount of funding is going towards personnel, this amount may go to supplies. I'm just asking how much of that funding, like, what is it, is going towards personnel? So the financial literacy program that is about, what is it, $1 million? Well, it's probably more than that. How much is going towards personnel?
So.
If you don't know, I would like to request that whenever.
I'm trying to find the page for you, because I'm not going to make up anything. I'm going to answer it for you. The answer to the question is none of it going towards personnel, because our personnel is not, our personnel is not delivering the service. It's in the DYS, it's under professional services. So none of it's going towards personnel, because our personnel are not equipped to handle an actual curriculum financial literacy program for K through 12 children.
I want to talk about like our personnel, just personnel in general.
Personnel for DYS?
No, 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 like for the program. So when there's a program, like if I carry a program for kids to fix chairs and I give $50,000 for personnel out of $100,000, that's what I'm asking for. How much is this actually going towards programming?
Oh, no, that's to be, that's to be determined. If the council, if the council blesses this budget and approves a million dollars towards, a million dollars towards financial literacy, what will actually be before you is the entire program that has been shared with us, it will be 2.1. That 2.1 will be broken all the way down. And our million going towards this program, what we raised the rest, will show in category what that million is going towards. But you know where I am. I want majority of it to go towards the actual curriculum programmatic piece.
Yeah.
No different than I am with Birmingham Promise and any of these projects I support. I want it to go to the program. I never want our money to be heavy on the personnel costs. I wanted our monies to be spent on the programmatic piece more.
Okay, I guess another consideration when you do the safe haven programs or parks and recs, are we going to have problems with staffing? Because I know before we've kind of had to kind of circulate our parking rec directors just because of shifts and everything. Are we going to have enough staffing to be able to do that? Or are we going to go out there and recruit people to help us out?
Based on Ms. Shanae's excitement, they already had a plan in place. I think part of what they needed from the city of Birmingham is more funding. I can't even take, I can't even take credit.
Yeah, I was kind of worried about that, just, I think it's a great idea, honestly. It's just, I'm just worried about staffing, that we wouldn't be able to sustain it, so.
The, the, you know, a million dollars is not going to cover every erection. Our priority is to cover every zone, which there are four zones, north, south, east, west in the city. Oh, four quadrants.
I know what you meant, yeah.
But will there be more than four? The answer is yes. Will it be for every erection? The answer is no.
Okay. Council Clark?
I just wanted to ask for a quick status update on our employee health clinic. I believe we allocated some funding for that, and I think it was supposed to be in Title Building there on 20th Street and.
I can't, I can't provide an answer to you off the top of my head, but I'm more than confident between Ms. Medzick and Dr. Creed Johnson, they will be more than willing to come before you and whether it's your office individually, if only you wanted, or for any of your committees.
Well, I'm interested because, you know, that was proposed as a significant cost savings with the city.
I can, I can definitely look at you and tell you that there's been some cost saving, cost savings related to that. I think that challenges, similar to a lot of challenges where Ms. Abbott uses the example of communication. And then you want the balance of more employees not only knowing about it, but more employees taking advantage of, advantage of it, alleviating their concerns of privacy and all of that, and just letting our employees know it exists. I definitely think it's gotten better since it's been in existence. It started out slow. But when I listened to Dr. Creed Johnson share her thoughts and concerns, she's definitely more pleased with the pace and interaction with our city employees. Your, your main question is cost savings? The answer is yes. Do I have any detail on those numbers before you right now? The answer is no.
Okay.
Council Clark?
Ms. Medzick said she can provide it. Mr. Moore, Mr. Mitchell just sent a message to Ms. Medzick, so.
Slice can.
Chill out. She'll provide.
She'll provide that.
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Clark?
Yeah, she's strong.
I'm not sure if it's working, but I wanted to just ask about, thank you, you are so kind of, some of the rationale for creating the Department of Capital Projects. And can we expect, I mean, it looks like you're combining like the city architect, the, is the city engineer going to be under it too?
So.
I mean, it sounds really good and I'm excited and I'm hoping that we can expect, you know, better facilities management, fewer emergencies, like there's something called life cycle costing they can do so that they can actually forecast, okay, we've got this many, out of 400 facilities, we've got this many roofs that need to be replaced in the next five years. I mean, will we be actually evaluating our facilities? Because those major systems, they have a life. And when you don't replace them, then you have an emergency.
So that work, Madam President, to.
And I think it might justify some of the bonds too, if we like had a multi-year capital forecast, you know, to maintain our facilities and refresh some of these systems in a timely way. And, and it can help support, you know, our need to go to the bond market and just, I don't know. I just think.
So there's definitely already been some assessments. If you, if you, if you isolate the fire department, fire department, for example, and assessment of all their fire stations, that work is already done. There's no money, monies aren't available to execute on the work. I know the library has their list, I know the library system has their list, and we can go on and on. We definitely have our list. And there's a court, police department, not sure park and rec, but I would venture to say the answer is probably yes. So everybody has lists. I want to, I want to, the next point I want to make is about your original conversation. I think you mentioned the rationale or intent, the reason why. I think when we first became a team, we talked about the P, the E and the P, right? The permitting, the engineering and the planning. I'm pretty sure there was a rationale at one point why the P, the E and the P were together. What we found is, I'm not, I think inefficiency is the wrong word, but probably making it more efficient by extracting one of those letters out or a subset within one of those letters out and making them just a team to focus on actual capital projects. None of us, okay, like I can look at each and every one of you, the 10 of us, none of us are pleased with capital projects. And that's, that is not, that's not an, that's not an assault on the team or the professional folk on the ground. Let me stop and say they do a hell of a job. But there's a whole list that exists of outstanding projects. It's kind of like, it's kind of like the neighbor who wants the light next to them cut. They don't necessarily care about the process. They don't care it takes eight to 10 weeks. They don't care all the steps that take and the legal hurdles. They just want it cut, right? They want it done. I think, I think we want the capital projects complete. At a minimum, we want them to start, right? So I think part of our rationale is to get a team together, make it an actual department where there's resources in place, there's a team in place. We can engage the personnel board to hire, hire more, more folk that have the technical or professional skill, and then that can get projects to actual completion. This doesn't mean we're not going to engage external or third-party folk or engage outside services. But we want to have an internal team dedicated to this, committed to this, focused only on this and drive projects.
And then in terms of like estimating for projects, I don't know if any of these functions, you know, if the architect, who would be doing estimating? Because I think that's, you know, doing a lot of the budget, helping us determine what kinds of budgets are needed.
So, so the capital project, I'm sorry, Madam President. So the capital projects now divisioned, but hopefully department has our, the people that we extracted are doing the estimates because we have the architect, we have the engineer. But the reason behind this is the capacity issue that we have and the amount of projects that we have on the books. We did allow a certain amount of money in their budget to maintain some type of project management outside resource to get these projects to completion. I think to the mayor's point, we just want to get these projects done in a timely manner. And so that takes the, the actual resources of the employees that we have in this building and another caveat hybrid of having a third-party company come in and help us assess all these projects to make sure that we're not just wasting our money, or the city's money, as said.
The only other thing I would ask, I mean, it, it sounds good, it looks good on paper. The org charts would have been nice, you know, but.
I mean, it, once the, I know this, it may sound a little crazy, but once the actual budget is approved, the official book will have everybody's org charts, mission statements, everything that you need to learn about that department.
Only other thing I was going to ask related to capital projects and facilities management is, are we going to have better, like, what is it, like preventative maintenance? I know that's maintenance, but it is related. It should be related.
So this, I think this, your question requires me to be totally candid with you. We would love to get to preventative maintenance, right? Even with street paving, but we're still behind.
I mean, facilities.
Same. We are, we are totally behind on facilities. Like that, we would love to be preventive with, with fire stations, for example. So fire stations will be my priority and will be the example I use over and over again because our employees not only work there, but they live there, right? We can't get to preventive and just standard upkeep of them on a yearly or every three year basis or five years because we're so behind in the work that needs to be done. So can we get there? Yeah, maybe if we, if we can go to the bond market and max out and get, and have this rush to bring all our facilities up to code and update, whether they're new or retrofitted, then I think you, we can then be in a position to talk about preventive maintenance. But truthfully, that is a very, I'm not going to say impossible, it's just, it's hard to talk about right now, whether we, whether you budget for it or not, because we're behind in every category.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's six o'clock and. Well, a little past five o'clock. So as Madam President say, if y'all can do one-on-ones.
Yeah.
Like my questions.
For work. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Madam Pro Tem, for taking the opportunity to lead this budget discussion. I appreciate you for doing this. And thank you, Mayor Whitman and Chief, for providing the answers that you gave us and giving us this opportunity to have the dialogue, personal dialogue with you. So tomorrow is our next public hearing, that's at 5:30 here in the council chambers. And so we encourage any residents who would like to come and present any questions or information they would have to the council. And so I want to thank everyone. If we could entertain a motion for adjournments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposers. Thank you all.